Since Waini Bay has 6% of the city's population, 13% of the registered voters, and probably between 17 and 20% of those who actually vote, it was considered worthwhile that we would ask the candidates to be here to inform our public. The individuals who are sitting before you are Jonathan Sharpie, who is a council member and a current mayor of Port Waini. Thomas Figg is a former Port Waini employee. He's a current day consultant and also a concerned citizen of the Port Waini Council. Jim Hensley is an interested citizen and of course, one of our own. Jim lives right here in Waini Bay. Ellis Green is a council member and is a risk manager, I understand, for the city of Ventura. And finally, Norman Griffel is a current council member and I understand works on the Waini base. Our moderator and state leader is Peter Vigius.
Gordon, take a mic.
Peter is a technology ambassador for education and government for the Xerox Corporation. That's a server PR guy. He serves in this capacity in all Southern California and has been a longtime resident of Ventura County. He's into the production business for both Xerox and KDAY. And I have to say one thing about KDAY. They helped us sponsor this. They are a TV network, a small one, but now broadcasting. A lot of people become confused about that. They are doing what is now being done, which is broadcast over the internet. You will find over the next several years that having your television over the internet is the way things are done. Just like phones and there's something called voiceover right there. So anyway, that is why we see all of the KDAY things here. It's going to be live, streamed live right now for anybody who wants to hear it and see it. And it's also going to be recorded and put into their archives for future presence. I'd like to just take a break from what we're doing today to have one of our officers on the board make a presentation to one of our loyal and hardworking employees. Hello, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, I mean, you guys. I'm George Meyer, my new secretary here on the board directors. And I'm here today to give out a special award. Now, this person is busy all the time. We just finished, you'll know right away who I'm talking about, our first responders. See, notice I was making me up. Our first responders award for the firemen, the police officer, and the paramedics. He has done this for the past three years. And prop to say that I've served on the committee with him for the past three years. And because he's done such a great job with that, I recruited him to work on the Waini Beach Festival. And he did a great job there too. This man gives to the community, puts on a great meeting. I worked in municipal administration for 34 years. And I can tell you when you go to a meeting with Tom, not only does he give you a paper to write on, but he gives you a pencil to write on. So, with that in mind, Tom, would you like to step up to the microphone, please?
This is so uncalled for. Everybody here, you know me, we're all the best of friends. And I do it just because I'm a Waini third generation to retire here. And maintain that legacy. Not just as steward here, but as steward for the family. Thank you.
One of his team members, kind of here approaching me regarding getting this for Tom. So, you know, we never see him without his baseball hat. So, it's the CLA First Responders Award captain with his name on the hat. And his plaque which presented to Tom Larkin, number one chairman, 11th annual first responders, CLA, Waini Bay, 2014. Let's give it up for Tom. Thank you.
I'm not able to do this. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Remember this is an opportunity where all of us can possibly come appointed with the issues and the candidates. So, I want you all to pay attention. Refrain from hollers and loud clapping, even though you may feel like it, because that is disrespectful. Try to be respectful to everyone's opinion. And please turn on your electronic media device. Would that be mine, Peter? Your turn.
I'm on.
Okay, Peter.
First of all, I'm not this typical moderator. If you were disturbed by funniness, you can leave now. So, your names, I'd like them to be easy, for the badge brands, sorrow, aren't you? So, give the bill to Bob Allen, who's a big guy. So, I wanted to say wow, what a wonderful experience to be a part of a, an advanced country where people can articulate their opinions and you can make a choice as to how you decide once you get into the booth. So, I will try to be as fair as I can. I told all these wonderful people, they are all very handsome, fully equal. So, there's no discretion there. But we're going to ask some questions here and we're going to do this in proper order. So, I have the matrix here, if you don't have a copy of it. But we also have a wonderful timer and I've forgotten your name, which is another person who asked me. But she is a professional timekeeper and I know we will all fear her, like I fear her. So, the rules are to ask the questions except for the models who have two minutes to respond. And so, respect her 30-second rule because we, if you look at the back, you'll see very trained officers. And I'm actually shaking my head, so I don't think that she would follow the directive of her because she has a certain sign. She snaps, they're going to see action. So, anyway, let's, we're going to start with John. Okay, we're not doing any particular, you were, I picked to go first. And Measure M is...
Introduction.
Oh, I'm sorry, we're at the scene, strike two. So, we're going to do introductions. I have a executive department, thank you Bob for asking me 12 times a day. But we're going to have them give them an introduction starting with the person closest to you.
I already gave the microphone all the way over to Tom.
Well, let's, we can actually forget this way. Whatever your wife said, is that okay?
Good evening. I want to thank KDAY TV for sponsoring this event and all the citizens that came tonight. And also like to thank all the candidates that came because they really put themselves out there running their state council. Why didn't I run your state council? Well, I think we've got a great team going right now and a lot of good things happening with the city. And I always wanted to see the city prosper. And I think we're heading in that direction. And I would be a part of that. And just for information purposes only, I am not wrong when I think maybe some of the other folks are. So, I try to get straight to the point and move on. So, vote for me. My name is Norman Griffel, if you didn't hear the first time, I really appreciate it. And like your vote, thank you.
Thank you, Norman. Good evening. My name is Ellis Green. And I'd also like to thank the number one, the Character Living Association for being our host. And of course, KDAY for putting the events on as well as my worthy opponents, if you will. My name is Ellis Green. I'm a United States leading governor. I have worked in county government and right now I work for two city governments. I've got experience with most of the public enemies in Ventura County. And I'm concerned, I'm out here because our community is being attacked. Our community is being attacked simply because we're trying to do what all of the ten cities in Ventura County, plus the county of Ventura itself has done. And that's maintaining our business. And we've got mentalists coming in and they're bringing outsiders from as far away as San Francisco and further. They're pumping money in, they're trying to buy your vote. And I'm, though I'm not well right now, I'm trying to make every one of these events I can so that I can make sure you understand. Measure M is for Waini residents. It is not for the outsiders. We don't care if the people at the Oxnard Chamber or the Oxnard Harbor like it or not. It's got to be something that we've got to fight for. I'm going to fight for it. I'm going to fight for it even greater than my reelection campaign. And I'd be honored if we would vote for Waini under number four. Thank you.
Sorry, Ellis Hensley. I'm one of the kind of guys that kind of wants to stand up when I see something that isn't right. I step forward. I've done it all my life, the military trained me that way. I did my 20 years. And I like the communities that I live in and I get involved in. And I believe, I believe in fair play. The mission statement for all government, in my opinion, should be open, transparent, a common sense of integrity, duty bound to make sure it's a government of the people, by the people, and for the people. Not backroom deals where big pay raises for top executives are hidden in a raft of pages. All banks are equal. If the top executives get raises, show should they write in the file. A guy that's a union worker that's out there owing loans or something like that should give his cost of living allowance like everybody else. I'm particularly concerned, I've gotten really involved in this because of crossing guards. Back in August, the city decided not to have crossing guards. That's to me a riddle. That is dangerous. Those kids deserve protection. It's public safety, it's absolutely critical. And because the city is trying to shove this off and blame other people for it instead of stepping up to the plate, if they're willing to make deals with other enemies, then why might they want to take care of and tell that point? Another point that I'm really concerned about is the Boys and Girls Club. They say, "We still have a Boys and Girls Club here." Well, I called up the Boys and Girls Club in Oxnard today. They don't have a Boys and Girls Club here. Maybe they'll give it a little side room. But they turned around when this new athletic building gets built. The YMCA is going to have to pay more than the Boys and Girls Club. Boys and Girls Club charges $20 a year for a kid. If they can't afford it, the club wages right to them. That's where they could go in before school, after school, and be watched until their parents get off of work. That's not happening right now. And the city is ignoring that fact. They're claiming the Boys and Girls Club is here, but they're not. You can call the Boys and Girls Club in Oxnard and they're not. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Lynn, Peter, and Bob for helping put this program on. I'm gratified, I see some faces that I've grown to acquaint with you. I've been knocking on doors for the last month. I'm not quite done giving around to the entire neighborhood, but I'm delighted to see someone come out as we encourage you to do so. Do a comparison, a personal upfront, sort of, what are you about? Who am I? I'm a 39-year resident of Port Waini. 20 of my years were spent helping to redevelop and plan the community between 1975 and 1995. I'm a small business owner. I had dance degrees in urban planning and public administration. Most importantly, I'd like to stop and acknowledge my mentor, who is Orvien Carpenter. Hopefully, many of you know him. Orvien, would you like to stand? Orvien, not only is he a resident of your community, he spent 30 years on the city council. And I follow his lead. Hopefully, I've learned all the good things from him. But I can commit to you that I'll do my best if elected, following his lead. Orvien set the standard for what it is to be community-minded and believing in partnerships and collaboration. That's what I'm hoping to instill in this community. My overarching goal is to instill a sense of confidence in the elected leaders of this community. What I bring or what I offer is personal integrity, a historical perspective, and a commitment to do the right thing. So, I look forward to your support. Thank you.
I'd like to thank you all so much for coming out today. I mean, you could be home watching your first game of the World Series. But you came here to watch a bunch of politicians blow hot air. You know, as we come to election time, it's a time certainly to look forward, but it's also a time to consider the past. And this election for me has been especially pointed, this will probably be the last one I ever do. And I've been thinking what things were like 20 years ago. I've been missing some of the people that were there with us. And I appreciate the new friends that would bade along the way. But when I think about where we were 20 years ago, I lived down on Waini Road. We had a bunch of shacks, vacant industrial land. Across from city hall, there was an empty hospital. Those are some of the most attractive properties in the city. This is a very different city than it was 20 years ago. And everyone knows these last few years have been tough, been tough for every one of you. It's been tough for my family. But our city has gone through without a lot of the disruptions that we've seen in some other places. There's been no layoffs, no bankruptcies, nothing like that. And right now, we are heading for a much better future. We're turning the corner. It's a Friday tomorrow. We come through the darkest storms and we're heading for a brighter day. And it's been an honor and privilege to serve you and to serve my colleagues on the council. And I do appreciate your being here this evening.
All right, John, hold on to that microphone. Take a deep breath because you're going first with the first question. Next subject is Measure M. John, the most controversial item on the ballot is Measure M. Tell us your understanding of the measure and do you or do you not support it and why?
All right, well, I mean, obviously, I'm supporting Measure M. And why? Well, we have a business license ordinance that's 37 years old from 1978, when gasoline was $0.65 a gallon. And over the years, it's gotten a little bit out of whack. I've been wanting to tackle this problem for, you know, a decade now. And we finally got the political will, we have the staff in place to make it happen. And here we are on the ballot with it. Back in 1996, the voters passed Prop 218, which gives you the right to set the maximum amounts of any non-property-related tax. What do I mean when I say our ordinance is a little out of whack? Well, let's think about this for a bit. You know, if you look at, oh, the dry cleaners downtown or any small business here, they're paying hundreds of dollars a year in the business license fee. But yeah, we have some very large companies in this city. Deloitte, that's, you heard of them? BMW, they're not even paying anything at all. And, you know, I'm sorry, I don't think that's fair and I think that's right. They're happy to take profits out of our city. And all we're asking them to do is invest back. It's time that we run our business license ordinance up to date. And that's small measure M does. And quite frankly, I've not seen a lot of controversy from the people in Port Waini. Most of the controversy has been generated from people outside our city, if you want to be honest with that. So, yes, I do support Measure M.
Or do you not support it and why?
Well, first and foremost, first and foremost, I support updating the business licensing ordinance. That's not the issue or the necessity. Can I have a couple more comments? First and foremost, I support updating the city's business licensing ordinance. I believe in the principles of fairness and equity, but that's not what Measure M does. So, again, I support those principles, but we have a flawed measure before you. It's not a simple update of the ordinance. The current business licensing ordinance sets rates upfront for each business category. What we have with Measure M are artificially higher rates, maximum rates, that go into effect upon adoption of the measure. There's no assurance that the city council will adjust those rates downward. There is no requirement in the ordinance to do so. We've heard a lot of promises, but that's all they are. They can't make those guarantees because we don't even know who's going to be on the city council coming up November 4th. There's no requirement to hold public interest. There's no accountability as to the reasons for downward adjustments of those rates. In short, we have no assurance that this measure is going to be equitable or fair. There are a couple of other issues that need to be addressed if we do redo this measure. First is to consult the very businesses that are going to be most impacted. The Harvard, the Navy, and the business community. The business community, the Harvard, obviously come out against this measure because they know we consulted. The Navy can't take a position, but I can assure you, they're offended by how this has gone down. The city didn't do an analysis to determine what the reasonable charge for business license relative to the impact that the business would create. Again, there's no way of knowing fairness and equity under the current measure as it's drafted. And finally, it doesn't take into account other contributions by those businesses, like the Harvard district that pay revenues to the city by way of revenue sharing agreements I have craft 20 years ago. And I know that those revenue sharing agreements take into account maybe the impacts that these business license taxes are intended to offset. It amounts to double taxation. Okay, I'm sorry.
Let's make sure that microphone is on now. Jim, we're ready here. Measure M. Tell us your understanding of Measure M and do you or do you not support it and why?
Measure M. I do not support Measure M. Like my friend here, I believe it's flawed. That port is a golden goose. And the funny thing about it is that this measure would slip through very quietly for the city council. No public hearings, no nothing else, no finding out what the heck it was. But here it is, and now it's on the table. And it's going to be enforced at maximum unless the city council does it, if it's approved in November 4th. The problem with it is, they avoid, there's a lot of spin that goes on in this town. They avoid telling us that the port is one of the largest taxpaying people and/or companies, organizations in this town. Or one of the largest in the whole county. There's about $28 million that's spread out across the county from Port of Loon to Navy Base, the same way. The two largest economic engines within Ventura County. And their neighbor was supposed to be the friendly little city by the sea. And people are calling it maybe Mini Bell or the greedy little city by the sea. And they want to tap into the heart rate of that golden goose and get more. Now, maybe some of them don't have business license, but they sure as heck pay a lot of other taxes, okay? They're bypassing all of that. This thing could be far more fair and equitable. And I don't want to see the major economic engines in this county go down the tubes. I know what's going to happen. People are going to start moving out. I've been on the port boards before. And if they find, the shippers find that they can get a better price, a better deal with another port, they go. Simple as that. So, they may lose a million dollars, but in the long run, it's already stopped business. People that wanted to come here. So, no Measure M. Thank you so much.
Ellis, Measure M. Tell us your understanding of Measure M and do you or do you not support it and why?
Thank you. I do support Measure M primarily because I don't take money from Oxnard Harbor District to run my campaign. I represent the people of Port Waini. I represent what's good for the city of Port Waini. I represent what's fair for everyone. And I pay taxes. The revenue from Port Waini voted themselves an extra half cent sales tax. It's time for the businesses to hand you up. Our unions have handed up. Everybody's shipped in, but not, it's time for us to update our code. Now, you're here to say two things. One, I'll say, well, there's no certainty. Who knows the price of gasoline next year? How much certainty is in that? How much certainty is in income path? No, those things don't occur. Then you'll hear something, you know, they will say, "Oh, well, the Harvard Department is a golden goose." And then somehow they try to intimate that it's going to affect the Navy. I met with the admiral in San Diego. I sat in the flag office. The admiral said to the mayor of this city, and I heard it, "I have no problem with Measure M." I said that, you know, we'll hear some of the folks from Oxnard Harbor District make all kinds of allegations. The mayor can verify it and three other people from Washington DC can verify it. But the mayor, but the admiral also said that regardless, this space is going to flourish. It's already set to grow. So, when you hear those lines that are generated by the Harvard district and they are giving those two talking points to these candidates so that they can get a leg up, I say, don't listen to them. We have a great team in this city and it's working well. Send that team back so that we can finish our vision and we can deal with Oxnard Harbor issue and make them pay their fair share as well as the businesses like BMW. Thank you.
Norman, your Measure M. Tell us your understanding of Measure M and do you or do you not support it and why?
Well, that was a lot of information just passed through. Yes, I do support Measure M. My understanding is that we're just trying to bring up the present day rates, 1978, as plain and simple as that. And here's my promise to you. If it is unfair and the council votes to raise the rates up super high, I will resign. I will not be a part of this council. They did that. Thank you.
Candidates all warmed up, what's a question through? We got Tom here, he hasn't answered the second question, so...
No rebuttal.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, 30 seconds. You guys are on top of it. John, you know, is that enough of you, right, John? All right, here you go. So, rebuttal. 30 seconds.
Okay, there. Don't you think it's a little bit odd, you know, with all this talk about damage to the Navy and the business of the Navy, that there's not even one military contractor that has signed up for the NOAM campaign? The entire NOAM campaign has been run under San Francisco. It's funded out of Seattle. The bank in Sacramento, that's not a local campaign. And maybe you've seen this wire, NOAM, it's bad because they say it's bad. That was printed in Des Moines, Iowa. So much for local town.
I'm almost afraid to answer. Measure M proponents vilify anybody that objects to their measure. The supporters of Measure M discredit those individuals because they bring money from outside of Port Waini to promote their cause. Well, let's look at the, those that are advocating yes on Measure M. Where are their monies coming from? Well, I'll tell you a line share, those monies are coming from a developer in Port Waini that needs approvals from the city council. What does that tell you? What's even more disturbing is that two council members approve this measure and put it on the ballot when they themselves are going to personally financially benefit from this measure because they're home-based businesses and they will not have to pay one cent in business license.
Measure M, a lot of spin doctor stuff. And I spent some time as a first sergeant in the psychological operation unit. And we would take the enemy's information, the neighbor's information, and spin it around the way we want. Measure M, there's a lot of spin. And they claim they went down and the admiral was a medical, the business neighbor. The admiral's on board. And then, what happened then? Stephanie Hoops, the newspaper reporter called up and said, "Is that true?" And the admiral said, "No." Why do they have to spin these stories out? I mean, if I believe in what's going on, then why, guys, I might listen. But I don't have a lot of credibility with these folks. Thanks a lot.
You notice what he said, right? He trained himself in psychological warfare so that he could spin things. He fits in very well with Oxnard. He fits in very well with Oxtar Harbor District. He's putting a spin on right now. Don't buy it.
I stand by my first comments.
So all I gotta say, I hope you pick up that litter after you're done.
Yes.
Anyway, looking at next question. All right, so Tom, you have the microphone. And next question. It's on subject of Measure M. In the description of Measure M, a number of new categories are created that calculate business license on the basis of gross revenue. If the measure passes and you are elected, what would you do to reduce the impact of these businesses in the first year of the ordinance's implementation?
Bearing in mind, I'm only one person, but I would certainly advocate to suspend the implementation of the maximum tax rates. Give us time to evaluate the fairness and equity of those tax rates as they apply to each and every business. Right now, we're talking about a measure that's way out here in terms of what the rates could be. We need to suspend that, and then we need to enter into discussions with those most impacted to arrive at a fair and equitable tax structure. Thank you.
You know, Jim, for the sake of fairness, let me read this a little bit longer. But let's be fair. In the description of Measure M, a number of new categories are created that calculate business license on the basis of gross revenue. If the measure passes and you are elected, what would you do to reduce the impact of these businesses in the first year of the ordinance's implementation?
Very good question. What would I do? It depends on the rest of the order. But I would fight to keep it mitigated. I don't want to see the port being drained of blood. I don't want to see the Navy base drained of blood. This is draconian. It's not trustworthy, and we need to do something about it. At least I will try to bring it down to a constant, a sensible level. Thank you.
All right, Ellis, I only have a good memory, but let's read it again. In the description of Measure M, a number of new categories are created that calculate business license on the basis of gross revenue. If the measure passes and you are elected, what would you do to reduce the impact of these businesses in the first year of the ordinance's implementation?
Well, first of all, you know, we would have to determine whether or not that calculation is appropriate, either too low or too high. And if it were, then we would have to deliberate. We will hold hearing, listen to the businesses at effect, and then make an appropriate decision. But understanding, just because they create new categories, that's the purpose of updating the law. You know, we don't have pickle peelers anymore. We, the computers weren't invented 40 years ago. So we have to, by nature, add new categories. So just because it's a new category does not mean that there's something wrong with it. But I'll stand by my colleague, Norm Griffin, Griffin, the mayor. We will not have any exhaustive rates, no matter what. We haven't done that over the course of the last four years that I've been on council. Haven't done that over the eight years that Norm Griffin has been on council. So it's not going to happen. And it's not fair for people to come into our city, buy some candy, and split that stuff out and say that we do things like that because it's never been done.
Here goes. Norman, in the description of Measure M, a number of new categories are created that calculate business license on the basis of gross revenue. If the measure passes and you are elected, what would you do to reduce the impact of these businesses in the first year of the ordinance's implementation?
Well, to save a lot of wind out here, I'd be doing the same thing, you know, we all started talking about. We do have to have public hearings. We have to engage with our businesses to find out what is appropriate for the business licenses. We don't want to go above and we don't want to go below. We have to look at, you know, the region and see what is fair. Thank you.
If we need that mic, we'll follow you down to John. We've got a crap out here. So John, you have the microphone. In the description of Measure M, a number of new categories are created that calculate business license on the basis of gross revenue. If the measure passes and you are elected, what would you do to reduce the impact of these businesses in the first year of the ordinance's implementation?
Well, clearly, there need to be new categories. The existing ordinance sets rates for coin-operating televisions. You know, business has changed. That's part of our problem with capturing value from some of the folks that are doing business in our city right now. So clearly, the categories need to be changed. As far as the revenues go, we recognize we're a competitive environment. You know, Oxtar's right across the street. We're two of us guys. Everybody's going to pick up their business and move to Oxtar. You know, we want business in Port Waini. I want people to open businesses here. I want to make it easier to start a business here. You know, so the argument that's been presented, realizing the fact that most people don't understand what a business license is or what it should cost. Let me bring this down to a level that a lot of people, again, a lot of us have dogs, right? They have dog license. Now, if I told you tomorrow, the county is going to charge $5,000 for a dog license, would you believe me? You know, that's about how far out some of the projections have been from the other side. You know, rates are always competitive. We are in a competitive environment. We, as far as businesses at the Oxtar Harbor District go, so we have revenue sharing agreement with them. The more business they do, the better we do. So it's in our interest to encourage business. And it's not in our interest to set rates that are not competitive with other ports and other cities. Thank you.
Okay, rebuttal time. Tom, did you even have, right?
I'm not sure what I'm rebutting here, but you know my position. It's trying, this ordinance needs to be redone. I don't object to updating, but it's so flawed. We need to build into that ordinance the requirement of hearings. We've talked about hearings, but there's nothing in the ordinance requires that hearing. There's nothing in the ordinance that says the city council has to make a rational decision based on findings of fact. The city council didn't do its homework when they adopted this measure. They didn't analyze what the real impacts are for business and the associated fees that should be charged to offset those impacts. This ordinance needs to be redone. That's what I advocate.
Jim?
It's kind of being taxed without representation. Most of the port people there don't live there in Port Waini. A few do, maybe 100, 200, but most of them live all over the place. But it's still the large economic engine that derives from our whole county. And how 2,000 people here in Port Waini don't understand an extremely complex written bill, I hope some of you run online and look at it. It's really confusing. It's convoluted. They might be charging people $100 for a car if they go on and on to bases of port. All kinds of other things that can be interpreted one way or another. And as far as the city council saying, trust me. I've had used car salesmen say, trust me, I won't lie to you. Now, the way they snuck this thing through, and then they didn't have any hearing on it, but all of a sudden, now they say, oh, if we implement it, we're going to find out how much it's going to cost. And we'll have public hearings. I don't believe them. I don't believe about the voice of Roosevelt. I don't believe them about the crossing guards. I don't believe them about Measure M.
Ellis?
Well, it's the same old thing. They don't trust government. Yet he wants to be elected. Why does he want to be elected? Because the Oxtar Harbor District told him that he should run. I'm running because I have long wanted to help make this community better and Measure M through at the last minute. The year before I was elected, four years ago, I went to Dave Nolan and talked to him and met with him and planned how that day should go about updating their business code. He explained to me all the intricacies of all the capable companies that were here that had no business licenses. There's so many companies operating here that don't pay their fair share at Oxtar Services, and they have to do that. We have some very valid businesses. Our fast foods, our beauty salons. These have been long tenured business license places. So we want BMW to join in. And we don't care how big they are. They're not too big to pay taxes.
Norman?
Like I said at the beginning of Measure M, if we go down the path, this council goes down the path, and is trying to gouge businesses instead of trying to bring them in, I will resign. I will not be a part of this. I want to make this city a better place to live and bring as much business as possible here.
Do you have a competition in how well you guys ask the microphone around? All right, man, hand it to John.
Yeah, thank you very much. And a lot of this has been, Prohibition 218, right? To vote on Taxes Act. All the voters in the state passed this back in 1996. Most people know Pro 13, that protects property taxes. 218 is for everything else. There's a whole process that we have to follow. And Tom, as I understand, this is where it's suspended. That's what every city in the state does. Because when you go for Measure M, when you go for one of these measures off the ballot, you're building a block, you're building a ceiling that we can never exceed. You're setting some parameters that we have to fill in with actual rates. So when every city in the state of California does to say, okay, we'll make this so it'll last, well, hopefully we get back to this before 37 years. But we don't want to have to come back and have another election every two years if we want to adjust our rates. So we've built it some headroom, and then we suspend that portion, and we set the rates down at a competitive level. And that's what's important to understand. You know, and there's no assurance we're going to have here as well. I'll tell you what, you have a right to appeal. If we do something crazy, there's a judge out there that will throw it out about five minutes. You know, so there's a lot of protections for taxpayers in California. Believe me, and they're well covered under this measure.
Tom, finally, the vote.
Mr. Sharkey talks about fairness and competitive rates. There was a study done, actually, it's the 19th year in a row that this study's been done by a very prominent economic development firm, and determined that Port Waini, along with Oxtar and the uncorporate area of the county, already have the highest business license fees. In fact, they're rated as being the, an unfavorable community for businesses. So I take exception with the idea that our tax structure is outdated, that it has to be totally redone, and jack up rates that are astronomical. So I don't lie into that formula. We need to take into account the income that businesses bring to the community in the instance of the Harbor District and their revenue sharing agreements, but also acknowledge that Navy contractors, most of their impacts are on the Navy base itself, not the city of Port Waini. So we need to make those kinds of adjustments. Those adjustments should be made upfront, not after the fact. Thank you.
Okay, we have another question coming in here. And we're going to lead off with Jim. And the question, Jim? If Measure M fails and you are elected, would you suggest to erase the city's budget shortfall?
That's a very good question here, and I'm glad you asked it. Yes, the city of Port Waini has lost their economic development funds, and they relied on those for many years. In fact, soon I'm going to put down a Freedom Implementation Act and see where those funds were expended. Probably in good places, but I'd like to double check, okay? The city does need to have revenue, a fill-in on it. Measure M is not the way to go. And there's a lot of other ways. I feel the city, and one of the councilmen has been here for a quarter, a century now, they've become a kind of a stick in the mud type of situation where they're going easy and nice, and they lose a million dollars on the economic development fund. So let's attack our big neighbor next door who's got a lot of money. And repayments is a lot of money. To get some more out of them. I would, yes, I would look at all kinds of other revenue. And I would help and hope we promote other ideas to bring more business in and have a more fair system. And also, I would encourage assistance of the people, for the people, and for the people, and open and transparent government. Thank you.
Ellis, if Measure M fails and you're elected, would you suggest to erase the city's budget shortfall?
I'm sorry, you're saying what I suggest?
Let me read it again. If Measure M fails and you are elected, would you suggest to erase the city's budget shortfall?
You mean, what I have ideas to, you know, to backfill the budget shortfall?
I'm just reading the question.
Okay, it kind of doesn't make sense, but I'll try and address the issue of Measure M. Were Measure M to fail, we still have to update our tax code. So my first thing would do, just like I did this time before, I'd go out and talk to constituents and find out why, find out what needs to be improved. But I don't think it's unfair. I think the people along with the Oxtar Harbor District and the San Francisco big money and the lives that are being told when it's going to pass. But in terms of our budget, we wouldn't have had a budget shortfall this year had we not lost the pier, no, I'm sorry, not the pier, but the sand and the beach and had suspended that money to protect the community. That's what threw our budget out of whack. I expect us to move back to a balanced budget. But we will have a Measure M that's going to pass. I have faith in the people of Port Waini.
Thank you, Ellis. Norman? If Measure M fails and you're elected, would you suggest to erase the city's budget shortfall?
Well, I'm not sure if I erase the city's budget shortfall without decreasing services, which I don't want to do. And I'm not for raising taxes on the citizens. I think they're taxed enough, they don't get paid as well as they used to. The rate of inflation isn't keeping up with the social security checks. So, you know, that's my thoughts. And I'm hoping Measure M will pass so we can increase our services. Like the police department, we need more police officers on the street protecting us. We're surrounded by a lot of crazy people in Oxtar, we have to say that. But our guys rock dirt, fighting every single nut. And I've been on a lot of ride-alongs. And let me tell you, this city looks a lot different in the evening. It's not the one pristine city that you see when you drive around. It's a totally different place. So please, go for Measure M.
Let's get that right in front of John. John, what's going there? If Measure M fails and you're elected, would you suggest to erase the city's budget shortfall?
Yes, well, we do have a less budget. Let's be clear about that. If we do not receive additional revenues, and we're in sort of the holding pattern that we've been, we've been looking at various economies, we're realigning staff, we have things like tree maintenance, a little behind on that, will still be behind on that. Those are the things we look at, and we'll be in a maintenance situation. And the problem is with that, of course, that everything in the world keeps getting a little more and more expensive, so it gets a little harder for us to keep up. But, you know, I just think that, recall, wasn't it back last year? Someone was criticizing us for having a large reserve fund. And for a city like Port Waini that doesn't have a great deal of sales tax coming in, a lot of hot revenue that we can ramp up, it's important that we maintain a large reserve fund. And if you look at just the incidents of expenses we've had at the coast, we're a coastal city, my goodness, you know, storms happen, damage happens. We're going to be ready to defend that. So, yeah, we have, we're still going to have a healthy reserve fund. We want to keep it healthy. But, you know, clearly, if we cannot increase our revenues, understand in California, most cities rely on sales tax. You know, we're not on the freeway, we'll never have an auto mall, you know, we're not going to have the outlets there. So sales tax is something, we're at the bottom of the state in sales tax. So we do need other sources of revenue. And we've always got to be very, very prudent in our budget.
All right, Tom, was I giving you any questions, Jim?
No, I think I got the gist.
No, I think I've got the justice, you got it. This city has a structural budget deficit, which means we have more costs of providing public services than the traditional sources of general fund revenues to pay those expenses, and it's projected to increase over time, so that gap's gonna get wider. I look at it as a two-pronged issue, cost containment and revenue enhancement. We don't talk too much about cost containment. The city's expenses over the last 20 years, while Mr. Sharkey's been on council, has increased incredibly. We need to take a look at how to reduce some of those expenses. Then on the revenue enhancement side, and I'll get back to the whole concept of harboring, we need partnerships with the harbor and the Navy. They're keys to our economic well-being. Right now, the city's in royal litigation with one of our partners, the Harbor District. I am hoping, if I'm elected, I would facilitate a positive outcome that would broaden beyond just those revenue sharing agreements. But take a look at some of the city's underutilized assets. There are some properties in the city of Port Wahine that could be of great benefit to the Harbor District and could translate to additional revenues to the city. So, you know, there are opportunities out there. I'm advocating for the establishment of an economic development program. We're actually dedicating resources and staff people to seek out external grant funds that I know are not being exploited, and we, again, take advantage of our partners. The Harbor District has assisted the city in the past, going after funds available through Homeland Security. So we need to dedicate staff resources to go after those opportunities. We need to take advantage of emerging tools to replace redevelopment that we lost, and there are opportunities available and are emerging from Sacramento. We need to hit the ground running to take advantage of those opportunities. And then we need to attract businesses to backfill our vacant storefronts. Oh, thank you.
Jim, is there any repeat, the question I'm gonna add? Okay, here we go. If Measure N fails, and you're elected, what would you suggest to erase the city's budget shortfall?
The shortfall? I'm, let me try to phrase it this way. How would I phrase it?
You already asked, Ben.
Well, that's the same question, I thought, but if you want me to rephrase it?
No.
All right. We're not gonna actually rebut this one, so we're gonna go on to the next one, so.
Okay.
We're gonna go on to question four, which, you know, here. Ellis, you're gonna start this one.
Sure, this is boring.
I'm trying to do that here, it's supposed to keep you humble. All right, Ellis, here we go. This is intergovernmental cooperation. It's apparent that the city is and has been engaged in some disputes with the Wahine School District, the port, the county, and the city of Oxnard. If elected, how would you bring about cooperation with these and other stakeholders to resolve difficulties and avoid costly litigation?
Well, first of all, the city is not involved in litigation with the school district, with the Navy base, what else is your name? The only one that the city is engaged in litigation is the Oxnard Harbor District, which sued the city. In fact, they sued the city twice now. And the last one, most recently, they dumped the stack of litigation paperwork on our attorney about this time. But the problem is, that doesn't get reported in the Ventura County Star. Only if you believe religiously the Ventura County Star, do you believe that the city, for instance, tried to dump crossing guards. The city did its duty based on the law. It met with the school district and sought to arrange a new plan for managing school crossing guards. So that's how that goes. There's a lot of misinformation in that question, but the point of fact is, I would love, and I work very well with other government entities. We have a great relationship with the Navy, contrary to what the Oxnard Harbor District public sciences. We are trying our best to work with all of the other community organizations, including the school district. We expect, we have an agreement with the school district. We expect to continue to have an agreement with the school district, and I expect our life to go that way.
Thank you, Ellis. Norman, here we go. It's apparent that the city is and has been engaged in some disputes with the Wahine School District, the port, the county, the city of Oxnard. If elected, how would you bring about cooperation with these and other stakeholders to resolve difficulties and avoid costly litigation?
Well, right now, we're not in any litigation with the Navy or the school district. The only place where our litigation is, the Harbor District. And as far as dealing with them in the future, you know, we used to have a board city committee, and that was working pretty well, and we tried to iron some issues out, but lawyers got involved. And once the lawyers got involved, everybody buttoned up. And I think that's pretty sad, because as elected officials, we should be trying to work things out on the litigation, because it only hurts the citizens, it hurts our budget. So I think we should try to get back to the board city committee. Maybe we can have a seat on the board, one or two people from the city. That way we can pump out our issues, instead of, you know, clamping up and going to lawyers. It's just not right. Thank you.
Then Mike, the phone's in. John, what's going down there? John, it's the apparent that the city is and has been engaged in some disputes with the Wahine School District, the port, the county, the city of Oxnard. If elected, how would you bring about cooperation with these and other stakeholders to resolve difficulties and avoid costly litigation?
Well, whenever two agencies bump up against each other, they're gonna be in disputes from time to time, that's pretty obvious. But if we're gonna be effective, we have to treat each other as equals, and we have to trust each other, tell each other the truth. Failing that, is when things get difficult. You know, Norman mentioned the board of directors of the Oxnard Harbor District. Not one of those people lives in Port Wahine. But that's, you know, if they think about us, they don't need any, if they know those, well, Port Wahine is still an election. I mean, did they think about us? I don't know. You know, I'd like to be friends with everybody, I'd like to get along with everybody. You know, I'd like to shake hands with everybody. But if shaking hands doesn't work, sometimes you have to knock on the door. If that doesn't work, sometimes you have to pound on the desk. If pounding on the desk doesn't work, sometimes you just have to get up in someone's face and yell at them. Now, everybody told us, you know, when we were having trouble with the coastal commission, oh, be afraid of those guys, they're so powerful. But we went out there, and we raised a little havoc up there. And you know what? We're getting a lot more cooperation now than we ever did before. You know, let's face it, we're a little city, we don't have a lot of power, we're surrounded by some pretty big players. And one of the lessons we all learned on the playground years ago, if you're a little kid, the bullies don't want to take your lunch. If you let them take it, they'll be back tomorrow, and they'll be back today after that. The only way to stop a bully is to say, no, you're not gonna do that anymore.
Peter, if somebody left their lights on, I think the police, there's a car ride out here. Did somebody leave their lights on?
White Toyota.
A white Toyota?
I demand five extra minutes.
Forgive, forgive it.
This is not clear. It's apparent that the city is and has been engaged in some disputes with the Wahine School District, the port, the county, the city of Oxnard. If elected, how would you bring about cooperation with these and other stakeholders to resolve difficulties and avoid costly litigation?
The Harbor District, it was through the city's first redevelopment project that we doubled the capacity of the harbor. Our relations with the Navy, we widened roads, we made street scene improvements, we got the cooperative involvement of the Navy in the reuse of the former Naval Civil Engineering Laboratory. We've had a similar experience with the Wahine School District in the building of the Herbert Temple Education Center, which was a redevelopment project. The joint use of the municipal service yard that benefits both the city and the school district. And then the joint use opportunities we've engaged with the school district, the use of their playgrounds. So we've got a proud legacy of cooperation. But frankly, we need to build, rebuild trust. We've lost that trust. And frankly, the only way I see changing that and rebuilding that relationship is by changing out the three incumbents that are running for office.
All right, Jim, giving a little attention here, you ready for this one? It's apparent that the city is and has been engaged in some disputes with the Wahine School District, the port, the county, the city of Oxnard. If elected, how would you bring about cooperation with these and other stakeholders to resolve difficulties and avoid costly litigation?
Yes, Peter, it's an excellent question, I'm glad you brought that up, or whoever wrote it. I kind of get a kick out of what the city of Wahine has done about saying everybody's against this. Number one, nobody said in that question that they're suing Wahine School District. There is a complaint with Wahine School District, because they decided just to throw up the crossing guards on without working out something that's sensible. That's a public safety factor, we should go along with the city. Maybe it's gonna be resolved, and surprise, surprise, here it is, from August to November, almost, we still have more crossing guards. That's deplorable, that is terrible. The same thing with Boys and Girls Club. Yes, there has been a conflict with the port, from my understanding at least, the city has gone to the port and said, hey, we don't like the way that you've done your taxes. They claim that maybe you changed the way you do your books, and we've audited through the old thing here, that five contracts or something. And we think you owe us about $8 million. We'd like to have it. And apparently, the port tried to negotiate that, and from what I understand, it wasn't the port that sued, it was the city of Wahine that caused the arbitration. And the port had to stick up for itself. I mean, if somebody puts a gun to your head, come on, man, you gotta fight back, you know? And there's been a lot of things with the city that I feel could be done, really, to bring things back up again. They need to restore the police department, and the Boys and Girls Club, and the crossing guards, and take care of business, and bring in more tourism, more business. Make it on a stick, and create a good foundation for our businesses here.
All right, Ellis, you answered that question already. Okay, now, Norman, you're gonna start off with the next question here. And this one has to do with the drought and state conservation mandate. So, Norman, early in 2014, the government issued water conservation mandate that all cities must follow. The city of Port Wahine developed a plan that affected both businesses and individual citizens to reduce water use. If elected, what measures would you suggest for the city to take regarding the lands and properties it owns and controls?
Well, you know, I was on this issue quite some time ago. Going around riding during the evening with police officers. While they were looking for crime, I was looking at sprinklers and lights and the streets. And I noticed a lot of our sprinklers were leaking, and we were watering a lot. So staff got together, they started fixing our sprinklers and reducing the water times. The drought is here. One thing that we're looking at is the sanitation. We have to, we really have to tackle that issue. As far as personal, I drive to my house, my grass is completely brown. I think I'm gonna paint it green. So that's my thoughts on the drought. And please, save as much water as possible.
Doug, can you get your way down to John? John, it's the city of Port Wahine developed a plan that affects both businesses and individual citizens to reduce water use. If elected, what measures would you suggest to the city to take regarding the lands and properties it owns and controls?
Right. One of the reasons we built the water plan 20 years ago is so we could access state water. So we have two regular sources of water, the United Water Conservation District, which is our local water supplier, and the Cuyahoga Municipal Water District, which gives us state water. We also have emergency wells here in the city we could access in the case of emergency. There are three different ordinances right now that are affecting us. One is the, what the governor just signed for reducing drought water use, because there's the United Measure E, which also mandates the reduction in use. And it's also Cuyahoga is working on water reduction plans. There is a program right now for anybody that's available, it's called Be Water Wise, you may have seen the flyers for that. You can get $3 a square foot for taking out turf, putting in something drought-resistant. You know, the city for the last several years has been working on reducing water, changing out the landscaping, which is, you know, I don't know many, if any, you do remember the late Toni Young, she was on the council there a long time ago, she and I were very big on this, about changing out the landscaping on the mediums, and just being more efficient all around. So the city is well down the trail on that. We are looking pretty good as far as reductions right now for this year. Next year, we expect we're gonna have to come up with another, between 10% and 20%, depending on what happens with the weather. So this is one of those issues that everybody has to participate in. There's some really good opportunities. We've got information in the city, we've been going around meeting with homeowners associations, and telling all the AJOAs, trying to find ways, educate them to reduce their water costs. I know that's a big deal in my area, I'm sure it is here too.
All right, Tom, here we go. The city of Port Wahine developed a plan that affects both businesses and individual citizens to reduce water use. If elected, what measures would you suggest to the city to take regarding lands and properties it owns and controls?
Well, clearly, we all must do our part to conserve water, and I don't take exception with what Mr. Sharkey and Norman Rivera have indicated about ways to bring more water available to us. One of the things that troubles me, however, is the more we conserve, the more that translates to higher fees, because there's a fixed cost overhead that's built into your fee structure. So we need to address, how can we encourage conservation without picking people's pockets? The water rates have nearly tripled in the last 10 years, and in the last four years since the incumbent's been on the city council, it's nearly doubled. That got the attention of the grand jury, and they investigated this two years ago. And the city merely addressed questions of procedure and process, but didn't really address why the rates are so high. The grand jury found that we, the city of Port Wahine, charges the highest rates of any municipal provider. My goal is to revisit that issue. There's something wrong here, whether it's our meter system, or it's trumped up charges through what's called the cost allocation program, where we take a lot of external expenses and we build it into our fee structure. So, again, I think we all need to do our part with conservation, but I'm concerned about our rates. Thank you.
Jim? The city of Port Wahine developed a plan that affected both businesses and individual citizens to reduce water use. If elected, what measures would you suggest to the city to take regarding the lands and properties it owns and controls?
Thank you, Peter. Water use. We are human beings, we're supposed to be adaptable to survive. And these gentlemen are set on the same water boards or the association of water agencies that I have at one time or another. And it's a known fact that there's a limited resource of fresh water. We're gonna have to devise other ways. Even here at Wahine Bay, we have beautiful green lawns all over the place, and I feel good about that. But sometimes in life, you can't afford to provide, like we do here, around $20,000 a month bills for water. We have the mediums, it comes down Bay Boulevard here. Now, that's kind of a contentious situation, because the city supplies the water, but they also supply the flow on it, and it runs down. I think about 7:00, 8:00 o'clock in the morning, there's water spilling over the street. The city's charging us for it, and they're not fixing it. A lot of these areas need to go to kind of like a coastal friendly resource, a way of redesigning the way we live, the way we implement our yards, our houses, and everything else. The city can make a lot of changes on it, but we have to change it if we're gonna... The city can make a lot of changes on it, but we have to change it if we're gonna survive because the water is just not gonna come out of miracles anyways. So consequently, it can be done, but we're gonna have to be future thinkers. We're gonna have to start planning for the future.
Ellis, the city of Port Wainey developed a plan that affects both businesses and individual citizens to reduce water use. If elected, what measures would you suggest for the city to take regarding the lands and property it owns and controls?
Well, number one, in terms of the properties that the city owns and controls, I think they have to continue their effort to make the grass areas water wise. I think the other thing that the city is going to have to do is be a better educator. We've got to convince our staff, our communities, that this is a game changer. This is not the just a flash in the pan drought. We're gonna have to make structural changes in the way we keep grassy areas or land areas. We're going to have defined programs for the community to convert these lawns. We're going to have to ask not only our residential customers and our homeowners association to do more, but we're gonna have to undo this drought.
Thank you, Ellis. On to the next question. We led off by, by John. We have a lot of score from the candidates here. Question number six. John, Wainey Bay has proposed to remove the turf on the median strip along the bay and Lido boulevards. This is the city property for which Wainey Bay is responsible for irrigating and maintaining. If elected, what will you support? If elected, what may you support our efforts in how?
Well, I support your efforts, yes, of course. You know, Port Wainey has a lot of homeowners associations. And I've lived in a homeowners association for quite a while. And as we all know, sometimes the boards are better and sometimes they're not. But basically, what you decide to do in your association is up to you. And as we just talked in the previous question, we are in a time where we need to rethink landscaping all over the city, all over California. And I do support your efforts. Now, we're in the question with the lead water meters and all of that. There's, you know, I'd like to see a solution to that. I mean, that comes under public surface property and procedures we have to follow. But I do believe that, you know, we can, you know, it's the old joke, come to the government and I'm here to help. But I'm a believer in supporting our homeowners associations. And so, yeah, I guess I would.
Tom?
Absolutely, I would support the association. As I've been walking neighborhoods over the last month, there's a lot of places in the center part of the city. It's sad that so many of the lawns have been left to just go fallow. But also it's a very attractive zero scape landscape, which is very water wise. And I would hope that that's what the association here is anticipating, not simply putting in bare dirt, but put in some sort of an attractive zero scape. I certainly would support that.
Ellis?
Well, particularly here in Wainey Bay, the city owns that property coming down from Lido. They water it, but we pay for it. We need to work with the city. The city needs to work with us as well as all the other citizens within this community to come up with new ways to have coastal friendly landscaping. The old way is great. We have all kinds of water, but the town was maybe 5,000 people. And California was only 100,000 or 200,000 people. But California is a big place now. We're getting bigger. We have too many people and too few resources. So we have to adapt. We have to change. And we need to get on the ball now.
Ellison?
Absolutely, I support the association for finding an alternative to the money it needs.
And I do support the folks that are doing this. And there's companies out there that give government grants to do these turf busters. I'm not promoting them, but there are one company that will come in and take out your lawn and put in a zero scape. Like Mr. Fig has said, I work on the basin, work in the environment, I work in building that is all zero scape. Some of the, I call them weeds, because that's what a natural intubation or plant pallets were in California and their water position. So look into something like that to save some money. And I'm pushing that as well with the city because we do need to get to zero scape all around the city, but we have to have a plant pallet for the whole city. I think Mr. Fig had a grab.
All right, this is the final question.
And it's Tom.
And then Tom. And this is a question for the final statements. And this is gonna be on the Boys and Girls Club of Wainey facilities. And we're gonna start off with Tom as you have so much help here, Norman. So here's the question. Over the past years, there have been a lot of discussion, controversy in some city actions about the permanent home for the city facility, for this important program. If elected, what is your position on this program and what should be done?
Well, it's kind of a reoccurring theme in my campaign. It's, this city is, its legacy is built on partnerships and collaboration. The Boys and Girls Club has a 40-year history in Port Wainey. Absolutely, I support the retention of the Boys and Girls Club. I understand the city's desire to try to maximize revenue potential of its various facilities. And the athletic center where the Boys and Girls Club used to occupy is one of those facilities. But you have to remember, the Boys and Girls Club is a not-for-fee based organization. They serve a population segment no other fee based model can. The Boys and Girls Club is occupied predominantly by kids that are coming from low and moderate income families, principally low income, without two-parent households. This is their only place. This is their safe harbor. This is a place for them to be safe and to feel that they're being nurtured. If there's a problem organizationally with the Boys and Girls Club, and I've heard that that's one of the issues, that they simply become a babysitting service, then let's deal with the issue. Let's don't throw the baby out with the bathwater and bring in another organization, whether it's the YUCA or some other fee based model, because we're going to lose a lot of those kids. And what's gonna happen to those kids? The city's rebuilding the athletic center has a covenant associated with the grant funds that are being used to build that facility. 51% of the kids have to come from low income families. And yet, what did I say? Upwards 90% of the current membership of the Boys and Girls Club fit that model. That means that 40% of these kids have nowhere else to go. So I absolutely support the retention of the Boys and Girls Club. Don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. If we have operational management issues, let's deal with those head on.
Jim, Boys and Girls Club, Port Wainey facility, elected. What is your position on this program? What should be done?
One of my favorite topics, thank you, Peter. The Boys and Girls Club has done tremendous things in this community and all over the country for many, many years. They've rescued and saved a lot of kids. They have a higher graduation rate for their children than just the adult school. They all graduate from high school at 95%. It's fee based on a very low income. It provides an area for kids who are coming from single families or very low income families. To me, it's an absolutely essential function. In other words, our police department is a well-known band. They cut back on them. We have gangs that are kind of infiltrating in. And we have a lot of kids on the street now since April. And where are they gonna get affected? You have to deal with kids and shame them at an early age to keep them away from those kind of criminal activities. And that Boys and Girls Club is critically important. If I am elected, I will do everything in my powers to see that they get a good clubhouse and they're here forever.
Ellis, subject, Boys and Girls Club. If elected, what would your position be and how would you support it?
I would definitely support the Boys and Girls Club continuing existence in the city of Port Wainey. I think it's assets in the community. I think there's room for it in the community. I would urge our staff, I know that our staff is working, despite what you hear some folks say they don't know, I know our staff is working with the Boys and Girls Club, trying to get an agreement and trying to get something so that that program can grow. I do not support having the club in the condition that it was before we had to go in to renovate. I think some board members for the Boys and Girls Club have stated that that's not what they support. And I believe that they're gonna work with the city and they're going to establish the Boys and Girls Club and see that it continues in the city for many years to come.
I do support the Boys and Girls Club. I was in the order of directors for several years with Tony Valente. We do have a place for the Boys and Girls Club in the city of Port Wainey. There's still negotiations with them. Did they run down the athletic facility? Yes. They were not putting any money into the facility. So I want to see them here for a long, long time. It does help a lot of people. All the numbers that Mr. Fig and Hensley put out are accurate. And one other point that they didn't put out, the girls, the vast majority of them, I don't think there is any one pregnancy in the Boys and Girls Club. So zero, like it's gonna be zero. So that's a positive influence with our kids. So we need the Boys and Girls Club. Thank you.
Can I thank all of you? John? John, Boys and Girls Club. If elected, what would your position on this program be and what should be done?
Well, somebody used the word thrown out. Nobody's being thrown out. Just speaking personally, you know, the last few years, that's several years, I personally give thousands of dollars to Boys and Girls. Not as much as Tony Valente. You know, you're way ahead of me, Tony, but you're richer than I am anyway. You know, my two biggest charities are the Boys and Girls Club and the Wainey High Boozers. So I, you know, I personally am a supporter of the Boys and Girls Club. As a city official, we want them to succeed. Now, there have been problems with the building going back in the days of Chuck Muncie back in the 90s. You know, maintenance is tough. But I think there's some wonderful opportunities out there and the city is ready to move forward and partner with them. And I think we can all come out stronger and better. And speaking a little more globally, we've got a lot of facilities around this city that are not making this very well. And so when we hear all these stories out there about, oh, we're reduced, you know, there are people on this panel that apparently have the gift of prediction, you know, they can see the future. You know, I don't know what the future's gonna be. We're looking at ways that we can use all the facilities in this city, the tennis courts, the basketball courts, all the facilities we have that are not being properly used right now, that are underused, find a way to use them better for everybody in the city. And that's what we're trying to do here. We're not trying to throw the Boys and Girls Club out. I think we also support the Boys and Girls Club. We want them to be successful. And, you know, we are willing to partner with them and work with them to make that happen.
Excellent. During the closing here, but as a former decapitalist, this reminds me of the ten events you guys went to two days, you're tired. Nine events, you're hungry, you're sleepy, you're thirsty. Okay, one more event, one more lap. And this is the final statements. And make it entertaining because these people are tired too. So make it lively. We're gonna start with Jim in closing statements.
I'm very grateful that all of you showed up there tonight. I wish and I hope.
Microphone.
Did you turn the button on? Okay. Anyway, let's get back to the subject matter. This is a wonderful community. I'm really proud of it and it has a lot of potential. We haven't been utilizing that potential. We need to come up with some new ideas, new directions and plans and create a better environment. We have one of the lowest incomes for this community in comparison to the rest of the county. We can increase this. I'm thinking maybe even living at a minimum wage of up like 12, 15 bucks an hour these days, because the more money that a person earns, the more money is spent into the community. There are ways to do it. We have to be future thinkers. We have to have plans and go forward on it. And I'm gonna be around here until I croak. So I hope to see you all and I would ask you to start going to the city council meetings, please.
Ellis?
First of all, thank you all for coming and thank you for running. Thank you to the timing keeper, the videographers, and even thank you, Peter, for reading me those bad questions. You've done a terrific job. I, you know, my offer to you is to be brief. I would appreciate your vote. I hope you understand that there is, this is a big moment for the residents of Port Wainey, not the residents of Oxnard, not San Francisco. This is a big moment for the residents of Port Wainey. Please go out and vote. I ask you that you vote to reelect the incumbents on the council. And I also ask that you vote yes on the measure. Thank you.
Norman?
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out and the mediators and Katie, the wife of Katie. You know, I'm a forward thinker. I'm a mentor. I'm a disabled veteran. And I'm always looking out for the military. So anybody who's saying that we're not looking out for them, they're wrong. They're not telling the truth. I see a bright future for us and I wanna be a part of that. We've got a great team. The incumbents, we work well together. We have different opinions, but we're gonna work them out silly on the dieh. And we do have open reviews. We're not trying to hack and complete votes. Just come to the city council meetings and you can see it all. Please vote for me. My name is Norm Rifford. Thank you.
John?
Because I'm a trained professional, I always check the position of the mic switch. Thank you so much for coming out tonight. I mean, there's always a lot better things you could be doing than listening to us, I'm sure. It means a lot. What it tells me is that you folks are the leaders in the community. You're the ones that take the time to learn about the issues, to candidates, form opinions. You're the folks that your friends and your family and your neighbors all look to for in place. And, you know, I am grateful for your presence here. I'm grateful for the opportunity I've had to serve with some wonderful people over the years, Orbin Carpenter back there, Tony Valente, the late Toni Young, and numerous other people on boards and commissions all over the county, up and down the state with the city council. I will say that this is an outstanding council that we have right now. We, you know, we actually don't agree on a whole lot of things when you get outside of city limits, but we all do work together. And so when you consider, a city council election is not like other elections. We have two candidates that sort of duke it out and ask you to vote. You're picking a team. And when you consider that team, we look at experience, we look at knowledge, we look at attitude and temperament. And we look at the ability to all come together and figure out what the, what is best for the city. And so I like to say for the local government, I was just about practical problem solving. And I claim those special powers. And I claim those special powers, I'm just a small part of a very large team. There's 118 people that wake up every morning and go to work for you to make this city happen. And the three of us up here, the three of us on the council, the folks running, we're just a small part of that team. And do appreciate your support, God bless you all for being here, God bless you, and God bless the city of Port Waienee.
Okay, it's, thank you so much, Peter. Well, I was just gonna drop all the end of time.
This'll be short, I've done enough talking, it's time for you to do the talking, and that's on November 4th. I'm a problem solver by nature, I'm a collaborator by trade, and I tell you, the city needs those trades more than anything at this point in its history. So I'm looking forward to your support. Thank you.
I feel like this is all, I'm gonna finish talking. No. Thank you, candidates, for your time, for all you, the fact that you are here says that you're extra special, and this is all on KTV TV plus some other pieces, so if you're into that. There are some celebrities here in the audience, notice how they treat each other diplomatically, shake hands, hug, they fight it out, but they're really nice human beings, all of them. So with that, I want to, I've been told, remind you that you can actually vote here in the, which room is it?
That room.
That group, thank you, you're the coordinator, I think of that. And also, there are some special treats up here, and not being the time, it's a bota dolce, which is an international pastry that's located at the Ralph's supermarket on Chandler Boulevard, behind me, I think you're not looking at me anymore, but there are some very nice treats here, behind me, which will be served to you. And that's pretty much. Oh, yeah, you know, if you're afraid, they're really nice people, they are approachable. So if I was to give them, um, you have to shut up. So if there's anything you'd like to eat?